I would like to call this village board meeting of Thursday, November 7, 2024 to order. Will the clerk please take the role?
Mayor Pogar.
Yes.
Trustee Schmidt.
Here.
Trustee Siddiqui.
Here.
Trustee Light.
Here.
Trustee Maritato.
Here.
Trustee Pojek.
Here.
Trustee Schroeder.
Please stand and join me in saying the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We now move on to petitions and communications. Trustee Schmidt, please.
The next coffee and chat with the village president and board will be Saturday, December 7, at the Linda Jackson Center for Senior Citizens from 10:00 a.m. to noon. If you are unable to attend and have any comments, suggestions, or questions for the village president or village board, please call the village president's office anytime at (630) 909-5302 or contact your local district trustee. While writing your holiday greeting cards to friends and family, please remember our military personnel who have or who are currently serving our country during the holidays. The village is conducting holiday greeting cards, collecting holiday greeting cards, and will mail them in time for a holiday delivery. Please drop off your holiday greeting cards to the village hall by December 5. Please do not put cards in envelopes, decorate cards with glitter, or add personal contact information like email or social media. For more information, please call Jessica at (630) 260-6060. Thank you.
Trustee Siddiqui. We would like to remind residents that per village code, do not break or move leaves or yard waste into village streets. This will help ensure our streets are clean and clear of any debris for safe driving. Yard waste collection occurs on the same day as regular waste and recycling pickup. The final collection day for yard waste will be November 27, 29, and 30, depending on when your usual waste and recycling pickup occurs. If you have any questions, call Republic Services at (847) 981-0091. Join us for Glendale Heights seasonal market on first and third Thursday of each month. Shop for food, produce, crafts, and more from locally sourced vendors. The market runs from 11:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. at the Sports Hub. If you would like to be a vendor, for more information, please contact Tania at (630) 909-5459.
Trustee Light, please.
Thank you. The Village of Glendale Heights invites the entire community to celebrate the start of the holiday season with the annual tree lighting ceremony on Monday, December 2. The ceremony will be from 6:00 p.m. to 7:30 p.m. at Camera Park, with the official tree lighting at 7:15. There will be hot chocolate, sweet treats, photos with Mr. and Mrs. Claus, and more. If you have any questions, please contact Jessica at (630) 260-6060 or visit the Leisure Services Department website at G H R E C dot org. Join the Village of Glendale Heights and the Historic Committee for our Victorian Christmas featuring a brand-new Kris Kringle Market. Come out to Heritage Park and Historic House, located at 311 Windy Point Drive on Saturday, December 7, from 1:00 p.m. to 6:00 p.m. In addition to the new Kris Kringle Market, there will be tours of the Historic House, arts and crafts, horse-drawn carriage rides, and much more. If you're interested in being a vendor or for more information, please contact Jessica at (630) 260-6060. You're gonna be busy, Jessica.
Clerk Schmidt, please.
Nominating petitions for the April 1, 2025 consolidated election will be accepted beginning Tuesday, November 12, starting at 8:00 a.m. Please note that on Tuesday, November 12, from 8:00 a.m. until 10:30 a.m., nominating petitions will be accepted in the Emergency Operations Center, located on the first floor of the village hall. For all other timeframes, nominating petitions will be accepted in village clerk's office, located on the second floor of village hall. The last date to file petitions is Monday, November 18, at 5:00 p.m. If you have any questions, comments, or concerns, please contact me, village clerk Marie Schmidt, at (630) 909-5333, or email me at marie underscore schmidt at glendaleheights dot org.
Trustee Maritato, please.
Join the Village of Glendale Heights and the Glendale Heights VFW Post 2377 for a Veterans Day ceremony to honor all military personnel, past and present. The ceremony will begin at 11:00 a.m. on Veterans Day, November 11. The ceremony includes a flag and colored guide presentation, red for salute, and a tribute to our fallen warriors. Please note that the village offices will be closed on Monday, November 11, for an observance of Veterans Day. For more information, please contact Jessica at (630) 260-6060. Get in the spirit of the holiday season and register your house for the Holidays in the Heights House Decorating Contest. Register your home starting Monday, December 2 through Saturday, December 21, to compete for the best decorated house in Glendale Heights. An interactive map with voting will be active starting Tuesday, December 24, and the winner will be announced on Monday, January 6, on the village's Facebook page. For more information, please contact Jessica at (630) 260-6060.
Trustee Pojek, please.
During the month of November, parking restrictions will be in effect from 8:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. due to street sweeping. Color-coded no parking signs are posted in four different zones throughout the village. Parking is prohibited on Monday for the red zone, Tuesday for the blue zone, Wednesday for the green zone, and Friday for the brown zone. To find out your zone, visit the village website. For any questions on the street sweeping program, please contact Public Works at (630) 260-6040.
A call for a public hearing by the mayor and board of trustees on November 21, 2024, at 7:30 p.m. for the purpose of discussing the annual tax levy assessment and collection of taxes for the fiscal year, beginning May 1, 2024, and ending April 30, 2025. A proclamation to proclaim the month of November as American Diabetes Awareness Month. A proclamation to proclaim November 15, 2024, as School Board Members' Day. If there are no objection, I will sign these proclamations. Number five, hug a tree update. Jessica Maridich.
Good evening, everyone. For those of you who don't know me, my name is Jessica Marsage, and with me is the village arborist Chuck Dombrowski. We are here representing the Village of Glendale Heights Green Team Committee. If you are not aware, last year, the Village of Glendale Heights received an urban forestry grant that allowed us to inventory every tree in the village. Through this study, we discovered that Glendale Heights has 112 unique species of trees and more than 7,400 trees on public property. To better share this information with the community, the Green Team Committee launched the Glendale Heights Hug a Tree Campaign. In this initiative, we highlighted 10 different tree species in 10 of the Glendale Heights parks. Each tree featured a QR code that visitors could scan to read fun facts about the tree and how it supports our community. We then invited the public to find these huggable trees and had over 750 people visit the hug a tree website.
Thank you, Jess. The success of this program was recognized by Chicago Trees, Chicago Region Trees Initiative, and the Morton Argoridum, who made up that poster for us, by the way, celebrating Glendale Heights' dedication to sustainability and environmental stewardship. Thank you to everyone who participated and helped make this initiative a success. Together, we were making strides to keep Glendale Heights green for generations to come. Luisa from PR could not be here tonight, but she was integral in having this program a success. Thank you for the opportunity to showcase this wonderful program. If you'd like to learn more about this initiative, the poster will be located, which is now right there, will be located on the first floor of the village hall, next to the front door of the finance department. Thank you and have a good night.
That's it for Hug a Tree? Okay. Mayor, you have Halloween now.
Okay, hug a tree is Jessica Maridich, right?
Okay, we're Halloween in the Heights, Mayor.
I'm double presenting today. So hello, everyone, again. My name is still Jessica Marsage, and I am also here to present the Halloween in the Heights House Decorating Contest that took place this fall. This program was created to showcase the creativity of our residents during a widely celebrated holiday. This free program invited Glendale Heights residents to register and submit photos of their decorated homes before October 20. The community was then able to vote on their favorite homes to determine the spookiest house in Glendale Heights. We are pleased to report that 22 households participated in this contest and 435 people voted. I now want to take this opportunity to showcase the top three winners as determined by the voters. If any of the winners are present tonight, please stand when your house is called so you can be recognized for your achievements. The third-place winner is the Inferno House, submitted by the Zamadio family. They received a total of 38 votes. The second-place winner is the Beetlejuice Beetlejuice House, submitted by the Palmer family. They received a total of 50 votes. And our first-place winner, winning only by three votes, 53 votes, is the Curse on Leslie House, submitted by the Mueller family. Now, I can confirm the Mueller family is here. And thank you to everyone to beating me to do that. I wanted to give them a round of applause. Their house was truly fantastic. If you cannot see it this year, I encourage you to stop by next year as now they have to up the decorations they already did to win again next year. A big thank you to everyone who took part in this program and a special thank you to our event sponsors, Vertical Endeavors, Culvers, KW Premier Properties, and Village Tavern for generously donating the prizes for our winners. Building off the excitement from this contest, I am pleased to announce the launch of the Holiday in the Heights House Decorating Contest. Glendale Heights residents are invited to once again register and submit photos of their decorated homes between Monday, December 2 and Saturday, December 21. Voting will take place starting on Tuesday, December 24 through Saturday, January 4. The top three winners will be announced on the Village of Glendale Heights Facebook page on Monday, January 6. For more information, please visit the Sports Hub website at www.G H R E C dot org. And before I finish my presentation tonight, I would like to thank the other committee members who worked with me to put this together. That would be Luisa Barardi and Chris Dowoski. Without their collaboration, this would not have been possible. Thank you for the opportunity to highlight these contests and our winners, and I hope everyone has a great night.
Thank you. Next is a public discussion of agenda items only. If there are anyone in the public that would like to address this board on an agenda item only? None? You have the consent agenda before you vote acting village administrator. But please, please do the consent agenda.
Thank you, Mayor. One, approval of the regular board meeting minutes of October 17, 2024. Two, approval of the committee of the whole meeting minutes of October 17, 2024. Three, approval of the accounts payable listing of August 31, 2024, the amount of $2,110.83. Four, approval of the accounts payable listing of September 30, 2024, the amount of $34,283.30. Five, approval of the accounts payable listing of September 30, 2024, in the amount of $2,105.97. Six, approval of the account payable listing of October 31, 2024, in the amount of $1,920,663.13. Seven, approval of the accounts payable listing of October 31, 2024, in the amount of $79,390.20. Eight, approval of accounts payable listing of November 7, 2024, amount of $2,694,442.21. Nine, a resolution authorizing the purchase of bulk rock salt for use within the Village of Glendale Heights. Ten, a resolution authorizing the execution of change order number one, final for the Mill Pond Lift Station Improvement Project in the Village of Glendale Heights, Illinois. Eleven, a resolution authorizing issuance of a notice of award and authorizing the execution of a contract for the purchase and planting of approximately 33 parkway trees in the Village of Glendale Heights. Twelve, approval of pay request number 11 to Trotter Associates Incorporated for the Mill Pond Lift Station Improvements Project, total amount not to exceed $234,014.14. Thirteen, approval of pay request number 1 to Utility Service Company Incorporated for the West Burdette 500,000-gallon elevated petosphere water storage tank annual maintenance, total amount not to exceed $259,001. Fourteen, approval of pay request number 1 to V3 Construction Group Limited for the Menards Pond Restoration Project, total amount not to exceed $4,933.76. Fifteen, approval of pay request number 3 to J. Johnson Paving Company for the 2024 Motor Fuel Tax Road Program, total amount not to exceed $353,093.64. Sixteen is approval of consent.
Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda? Trustee Schmidt.
I move that the village board approve the consent agenda as presented.
Trustee, second. Role call board, please.
Trustee Schmidt.
Yes.
Trustee Siddiqui.
Yes.
Trustee Light.
Yes.
Trustee Maritato.
Yes.
Trustee Pojek.
Yes.
The consent agenda is approved. Old business, there's none. New business, a motion to waive first reading on new business item number two and three. Is there a motion to waive first reading on new business item two and three? Trustee Schmidt.
So moved.
Second.
Second, trustee Maritato. Discussion. None. Role call board, please.
Trustee Siddiqui.
Yes.
Trustee Light.
Yes.
Trustee Maritato.
Yes.
Trustee Pojek.
Yes.
Trustee Schmidt.
Yes.
The motion to waive first reading on new business items two and three is approved. Next, an ordinance authorizing the sale of surplus personal property owned by the Village of Glendale Heights, LNI 1284 F-350, utility body with snow flow and 12009, 2009 Ford F-150 pickup truck. First reading is waived. This is ordinance 2024 dash 20 dash 64. Is there a motion to adopt ordinance 2024 dash 64? Trustee Light.
So moved. Second.
Second, trustee Siddiqui. Discussion. Oh, is it done, you know? The motion to ordinance 2024 dash 64 is approved. We need a rule. Role call board, please.
Trustee Light.
Yes.
Trustee Maritato.
Yes.
Trustee Pojek.
Yes.
Trustee Schmidt.
Yes.
Trustee Siddiqui.
Yes.
The motion to adopt ordinance 2024 dash 64 is approved. Number three, an ordinance to waive, authorize the issuance of notice of award and to authorize the execution of contracts for emergency tree removal service. First reading is waived. This is ordinance 2024 dash 65. Is there a motion to adopt ordinance 2024 dash 65? Trustee Schmidt.
So moved.
Second, trustee Light.
Second.
Our discussion. None. Role call board, please.
Trustee Maritato.
Yes.
Trustee Pojek.
Yes.
Trustee Schmidt.
Yes.
Trustee Siddiqui.
Yes.
Trustee Light.
Yes.
Trustee. It's it.
A motion to adopt ordinance 2024 dash 65 is approved. Public discussion of agenda items. Is there anyone in the public that would like to address this board on an agenda item only? Anybody from public? None? Exact obsession, there's none adjournment? Is there a motion to adjourn? Trustee Maritato.
Motion to adjourn.
Trustee Schmidt.
Second.
Role call board, please.
Trustee Pojek.
Yes.
Trustee Schmidt.
Yes.
Trustee Siddiqui.
Yes.
Trustee Light.
Yes.
Trustee Maritato.
Yes.
The meeting is adjourned. Trustee Schmidt, you have the committee of the whole meeting.
I'd like to call this committee the whole meeting on Thursday, November 7, 2024 to order. Would the clerk please note who is present?
Noted.
Thank you. Does anyone have any additions or deletions? Miss trustee Siddiqui.
Yeah, newsletter.
Newsletter, okay.
And number two is diversity.
I'm sorry, diversity?
Yes.
Okay. Anybody else? Okay. Committee reports, golf club committee, any report?
No report.
Okay, historical committee?
Yep, just a reminder, come on out December 7 for the Victorian Christmas and Kris Kringle Market from 1 to 6 p.m. It should be a really great event, so come on out.
Okay, ordinance committee, Mary's not here tonight. Parks and Rec Committee?
No report, but we got a meeting coming up, what, the 19th? Keith, I think it's 19th.
Property Enhancement Committee, we held a meeting on October 23 where Tom Bialis did a presentation on rental licensing renewal and online submissions for the landlords and managers in attendance. Unfortunately, it was very sparsely attended, but he did a thorough job and presented a lot of good information. There will be no meetings in November or December. The next meeting will be on the 22nd of January, 2025. Okay, and the senior citizens advisory committee? Again, Mary is not here, so...
There's no report for the senior center.
Oh, okay.
I know Mary's not here, but there's no report.
Okay, thank you. Okay, before we get going to the discussions on the agenda here, I want to make a statement saying, recent committee of the whole meetings have been characterized by name-calling, abusive personal remarks, and a general lack of respect by some committee members toward their fellow members, by members of the audience toward committee members, staff, and other audience members. The result is chaos and a display which has made our village the laughingstock of those who follow our meetings on broadcast and social media. I do not intend to allow this to happen tonight. I expect all persons in attendance tonight to conduct themselves with civility and decorum. There will be no name-calling or personal attacks, attempts to demean or belittle others, or create disorder. This meeting is conducted under Robert's Rules of Order, which contains provisions for the orderly conduct of this meeting. It also contains means for the removal from the meeting of persons who are disruptive. I don't wish to invoke these steps, but I will if necessary. The meeting will then proceed without the disruptive person or persons in attendance. Let us now proceed with the meeting, acting like civilized ladies and gentlemen. Okay, the first item on the agenda here is appointments for directors of public works, director of community development, and village administrator. Mr. Flint?
Mayor. We have three positions open. One is the public works. Those interview process has been done, and I have recommended. And our department is having a lot of problem because of lack of directors. Second is, I have recommended, my part is done, and there are trustee who are obstructing, you know, that process, you know. Second is Kam Dev, our director, Kam Dev, he left, he found some other job. And again, I advise, you know, ABA, Mr. Flint, to publish their job. Have you published their job?
No, but as we've talked, the board isn't going to approve any appointments.
No, I mean, you should publish, you know, at least, you know. What I can do, you know, my part should be done, you know. So please do that, then.
Okay.
And third is village administrator, there is a position. Actually, when I came to this office, I took office, you know, May 21, there was just one village administrative position. And after that, we hired Mr. Flint from Police Department, and he is performing acting village administrator about two years, I believe, right?
Three.
Three, three years, you know. And my intent is to promote him as village administrator. Still, there is problem by the board. I don't find any reason, any logic, accept retaliation or any agenda against mayor. That's okay, against mayor is fine, but not against employees, you know. Because our village is suffering, our residents are suffering, and people who are expecting job or promotion, they are not getting those promotions as well as jobs, you know. So on my part, I urge my citizen, I request to my citizen that they should have voice in filling this position and talk with these stresses, they are here, what they want to do, you know. I want to help those people, I want to promote, you know, as usual.
Does there anybody else have any comment? Okay. Okay, next item. Newsletter, Mohammed.
Yeah, so Keith, I received two newsletters, so does my neighbor, and a lot of people receive two newsletters. Why we are receiving two?
I can answer that. When the village puts out the bulk mail, the bulk mail goes to the post office. Post office is instructed to hand one per household. The post office obviously doesn't deliver one per household. Some people get three or four.
Yeah.
Some people, some people don't get any.
Yeah.
But we're at the mercy of the post office to deliver the mail to the residents because they're giving it in bulk with the instructions delivered to one per household. And when they sort their mail, I've asked this question of how they do it. Sometimes two go into the pile for the resident, the household, sometimes three, sometimes none. That's not something we have any control over. We've had many discussions, Mr. Polling and I, with the postmaster at the Carroll Street Postal Facility. It's a tough conversation to have because the mail is the mail.
So it's the mail now?
Yeah. We're at the mercy of how they deliver it.
But I mean, okay, maybe a one mailman can do it, two mailmen, but why? I saw it on the Facebook as well, in many areas. Can't they see that this is two, not one? What is the reason?
That I would have to talk to the postman about and why they are putting sort of...
Do we give like number of, or we give in a bulk that...
It's just addressed to the household, and we just deliver, literally deliver 11,000 newsletters to the post office on the bulk mail, and they're supposed to hand one per house... to the post office on the bulk mail, and they're supposed to hand one per household.
So they printed the address, like at the.
No, we do it.
You do it, so how come I have like two printed on mind, like, you know, who, who printed the address?
Because it just says household on it, it doesn't say your address on it.
Oh, okay.
So it just says to your, the household.
Got it, okay. Yeah, okay. So it's, okay. So you, you already talked to the?
We've talked to the, we talked to the postmaster regularly.
Still no solution, okay.
They just, I won't get into the Carroll Street post office, but we talked to the postmaster regularly.
I know exactly. I already had a talk with the postmaster, and I, personally, I know what's going on over there. Uh, okay, number two is diversity. Uh, recently, you know, in our village, the board has been called racist, uh, so many other names. So I have an idea, and I hope board will, uh, like my proposal. Uh, my proposal is, we have a billboard, like, you know, uh, at our, at Fullerton Avenue, the Glendale Heights. So what I'm proposing is inclusion of every faith celebration on our village billboard, uh, promoting diversity, respect, and unity within the community, and the pro- So proposals outline is that, uh, this initiative is aims to recognize and celebrate the diverse faith and cultures within the community. It would foster inclusivity, promote understanding, and all residents to learn about each other traditions. So what it will do is like, display, so you have like, you know, interfaith calendar with you, and you will just display happy Hanukkah, happy Eid, happy Ramadan, happy Diwali. Or maybe, uh, if the board allow, like, you know, the billboard allows a space, a brief description about that celebration. So what do you guys think about, I, I think that's a good way of sending a message that, you know, we, we include every, and we celebrate every, uh, holidays, not just, you know, Christmas.
Don't we do something like that, David? We have, I, I thought we do that, but.
Yeah, so what we do is we typically do a blanketed happy holidays, come the holiday season during different events, we do some sort of inclusivity. Um, there are, as we know, hundreds of religions of holidays that are celebrated all across the, the world, all across our community. So, uh, it, again, it's, it's up to you guys, but I will just caution that if we do go that route, that we'd be losing a lot of messages. We would have, you know, potentially thirty slides, forty slides, fifty slides at a time of not just village programs and events that we're trying to push, but now recognizing different holidays throughout the year. And then if there's ever any sort of controversial group or community group that wants to be included on that sign, then the question will have to be pulled into, do we include that one then too? So, just something to keep in mind, it is of course up to you guys. So I would say on our social media, we try to be as inclusive as possible when we do recognize holidays. Um, I make a, a conscious effort to educate of, this is so-and-so holiday to those who, um, celebrate, to learn more about said holiday or event, um, please visit so-and-so from a credit source.
Yeah, but that's in social media, it's in the display, that, and I think in Maine County, they are doing that, and I'm just talking about, you know, uh, the interfaith, if you look at the interfaith calendar, there's not that many, uh, which you will see. I mean, I'm not talking about going to each countries, you know. The, I'm talking about specifically about the, the faith, interfaith celebrations.
Okay.
So.
I don't, I don't have a problem with that at all.
So, maybe we should start and see, and, you know, if, I hope there is not going to be that controversy, because we are just trying to do a, a positive thing. We don't wanna, uh.
Yeah, I, I would say the biggest thing is just space constraints more than anything.
Yeah, so it would be just happy, and then whatever, if the, the space does not allow, just happy. So it's, it's, I mean, it will send a, a nice message to, to everyone, I mean.
No problem.
Yeah.
Could, could we just do the big ones? I mean, that, uh.
Well, I mean, I think, I think. Well, I think the trustee Siddiqui's point, we can look at the calendar and look at the, the census data and figure out what, what needs to go on there, and we can figure that out.
Sure, can we do Columbus Day?
No, I'm not talking about, I'm just talking about, uh.
The short answer is yes, if you wanted to.
Yeah, yeah, the Columbus Day, then, you know, you are going into the.
But, yeah, well, well, we'll, we'll look at the calendar and, well.
It, it's, uh, if you Google interfaith calendar, you will see.
Right.
That's, I already did the home, you know, look at it, it's not that long, yeah.
Do we have to change billboard, you know, cut bigger size?
Well, no, we just, we just put that billboard up last year, so.
Do nothing.
Uh, you got about twenty more years before we replace that one.
Doug, once I talked with someone and, uh, director mentioned that we had to change, you know, billboard number one, and cost is like, I mean, I'm in favor of doing that.
No, I'm not in favor of, I mean, burning, burning the, the citizens, whatever, we have, we just a simple message, yeah.
Yeah, the billboard is big enough.
Yeah.
Uh, if we make it too big, then it kind of blocks traffic view, cause it's right there at the corner. Uh, and it's brand new, so, and really expensive, so we're not replacing that one. But we can figure out the messaging and figure out the right.
Yeah.
Doug, I have something regarding, um, post office. About three and a half weeks ago, I got advertisement from a neighbor across the street. Usually I give, I get other people's mail, I take, I walk across the street. This particular day, three and a half weeks ago, I got his, his mail, my mail, and one on Wyatt. The Wyatt and mine were the same, it had some advertisement. So I just circled the address, all three of them, and put them in a mailbox. Would you believe I did not get mine back?
Yes.
That's how the post office is.
Yes.
And all my advertisement from the parks, I always give to Keith, I get three or four of them, in my house.
No, we, we fight that battle all the time downstairs.
I don't think that people at the post office could read.
Have you ever gone to the Carroll Street post office inside?
Not anymore, not anymore.
I don't want to bash the post office, I'm just saying, the, 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 yeah, the one, the bulk mailings that we do, it's not uncommon that two or three go to one household and some don't get any. That's unfortunate, but that's not a count.
That's all, thank you.
Any further comments? Okay, uh, do we have any, let's see. Has anybody requested to speak?
There has been no request to speak.
Okay. Then, is there anyone in the public that would like to address this board? Please state your name and address.
My name is Kim Darlin, my address is ten fifty-three Greenbrier. Sorry, Keith, this one's for you. Keith, I spoke with Tracy about three weeks ago regarding something to do with the walking path. What has been decided on that?
So I had a brief conversation on that, and I'll be honest with you, that's my fault. I was supposed to get ahold of you and have a meeting with you, so I bet.
Shockingly, I'm right here.
Perfect. I, I honestly, I don't even remember the subject, I just know there was something about a walking path, sorry.
Okay. Keith, if you are a part of the senior center, you get to walk the walking path for five dollars.
Yes.
Right? Do we have a flat fee for anyone who's not part of the senior center?
So we have a hub club that would allow for that, so yes.
Okay, but if you don't have a hub club? Hub club, I'm assuming includes our little, uh.
No, it includes a gym, that's just the, the typical, uh, membership for that.
What about people who just want to walk? If you go to Carroll Stream, they have a walking path, if you go to Glen Allen, they charge just for walking our hub. And all I'm asking for is something that's reasonable for people who are not seniors to be able to walk there.
So I can look into some different options. Part of the problem that we have is the timeframe when that would occur. Because generally speaking, you do a lot of your walking in the morning, and most people do.
Yeah, okay.
We have a difficulty of having walkers in the evening because of the activities that are going on, so it's just trying to set some timeframes that that would work.
Okay.
Um, we can certainly look into some options, we might run something that.
We can limit the hours.
I was gonna say, we have to run something that would run until like four o'clock or four thirty to do that, but yeah, we can look at something like that.
Okay. Um, then I have at, the soccer field, by the way, looks awesome. Um, with the exception of, what are those poles on the drive that are there? Is that where the stands are going, are we getting?
No, those are, those are leftover from the snow fence that was there.
Yes.
Okay.
There's a new fence going up.
Correct.
Is that gonna be a tall fence, or is that gonna be a short fence?
It's a four foot, it's a four foot, yeah.
Okay, is that going all the way around?
It is.
Okay, and then after that's done, that's when we're gonna look at the actual path that needs to be.
Yes.
Areas to.
Yeah, so that, that path will be reconstructed.
Okay.
Once the construction's done and the fence is up, that'll be in, uh, spring or summer of next year.
Okay, that pa- that fence that's going up there, is that gonna be a laxed fence, or is that?
No, no, so, the fence is there for safety.
Okay, yes.
It is not the intention of the village to prohibit anybody from using that field at a time that it's not rented.
Okay.
Right, so if kids want to go there, the whole purpose, if kids want to go there on Sunday and pick, play a pickup football game or a pickup soccer game, it's, it's their park, they should be able to do that.
Okay.
Right, we're not locking them out like the high schools do, we're not.
Right.
That's not the intent, the intent of the fence is one to help keep the soccer balls in.
Okay.
And to keep cars from driving across.
Okay.
But the intent is for the public to be able to use that park when, in that field, when, uh, it's not being rented.
So then my question to that would be, are there cameras on that field?
Yes, sir.
Okay, we're good. Um, I had somebody email me that there is a problem at Mill Pond and Schmale that one of the green boxes, the electrical boxes, is broken and torn down there. Could somebody look at that?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Ed, Bob, Wayne Avenue, sorry, Mike.
Oh, so, probably.
Uh, Keith, I got two, but they're, they're not kick-your-butt ones. First, I want to say what Kim said, the soccer field looks amazing, I mean, it's, I can't wait to see you open it. Um, I got another question, pickleball, um, I know you started one on the other side of town, and you couldn't get on the, the Nazos one this year, you had one side pickleball, one side tennis, and the pickleball people were literally waiting for the other people. What are we gonna do to?
So.
I, I mean, it's such an up-and-coming huge sport.
So we, what we did in the last couple of weeks is we've actually striped pickleball courts, one pickleball court at Omen, one pickleball court at Nazos, permanent striping, no longer with tape, and one pickleball court at Americana. Uh, we will continue to look at different options, but now we've got one everywhere to kind of spread people out, and we'll be advertising that as we move forward, so that people know we're closed now for the season, so it doesn't do me any good to advertise it now, but we'll be advertising that into the.
And the nets are adjustable for tennis or pickleball.
The nets are adjustable for tennis or pickleball.
Can we stripe the second one at Nazos so that they could, it could be either or?
I can certainly look at that.
I'm just saying, I mean, so many people were playing it over at Nazos, and, you know, they wanted to play on the pickleball side, the left court, and it was just always in use.
Understood, I can certainly look at that.
Uh, last, I just, chief, I wanted to tell you, um, Kim and I, we, you know, we graduate next week, this is my second time doing C P A. We had so much fun, I can't even tell you, I didn't really want to do it, Kim kind of corralled me into it. And we had a blast, the, the, the changes that they have made, they kept us engaged and exciting the whole time. Um, Officer Matt was there last, he taught us a bunch of great stuff last night. Um, I, I just can't tell you how much fun it was and how exciting it was to do it again, cause I didn't go into it wholehearted, I just, oh, all right, I'll do what you guys are doing, I'll do it, but it's amazing how much we learned. And what was really cool about this, doing it the second time, the first time I did it was, you know, fifteen years ago, it was kind of generic, they really taught us what these guys do this time, and, boy, I tell you, thirty years ago, I wanted to be a cop, and I don't know how these guys do their job anymore, they have to know so much. It, it, it's frightening what they have to know on a day-to-day basis, but the fact that they were able to convey that to us and teach us, we had a blast, we also had, I think, one of the best classes that ever went through C P A, we, we, we just all bonded and had a great time. Hmm?
It's the biggest.
It was the biggest.
You guys had a very big class there, and I'll pass it on, I'll pass it on, and it's opened up next year, so, what he's talking about is Citizen Police Academy, and you learn a little bit about what police do at, not only our police department, but all over. And there's a lot of dialect between the, uh, attendees and the officers that are there. We try to get, uh, different officers in, uh, each week, so they can learn a little bit different, uh, different items that we do at the police department, and you meet different officers too.
Yeah, and, and, and one more thing, I know my time's up, but Hoco did an amazing job, you know, he brought everybody in, introduced us, stayed for the whole, even if it wasn't his time to teach, you know, he, he, he just, he did a fantastic job, we had a blast. So I just want to tell the board and you how well they did.
Okay, thanks.
Hey, good, good evening, everyone. And my question to the community develop, uh, department right here.
Name, please, name, address.
Name, my name?
Yes.
Adines Chowdhury.
And your address?
My address is for community development here, department, which we, why are we taking a month and month to give residents permit to do this, some work in the house?
As I mentioned before, Lear, you know, we do not have director of Tom Dave's department, and these are trustee who are obstructing this process, and, uh, these residents are suffering because of that.
Sir, what's your, what's your address?
Eighteen sixty-four Nicholas Court in Glendale Heights. I had applied for my washroom permit to be remodels, it's literally take more than a month to get my permit. How can people, how can the student work?
Uh, can I talk to you afterwards?
Uh, sure. Also, the other question is, we have a peer, like, if you sell the properties, or if you buy the properties, if you wanna re, if you wanna hire the realtors, they always doesn't want to work with the Glendale Heights village, they say, oh, you are in Glendale Heights? We don't want to work with you guys. If you want to hire any contractor for work, like a windows or something, they're always saying, oh, village of Glendale Heights so hard to work with, so they don't want to work with us anymore. Even though if you want to hire the, uh, attorney for closing, they don't want to work with, they, they ask for more money. Oh, are you in the Glendale Heights village, we're gonna charge you that much. Why is that?
Um, I can answer, you know, we have eliminated seventy percent of those unnecessary rules and regulations.
But why can, why can we not address those rules, rules and regulations?
Yeah, we removed, and my director who left, actually, you know, uh, Comde Department Director, he talked with me, said, Mayor, we are going to stream down further, and he left, and their positions open, you know.
This is, I, I lived in village this twenty-five years, but every time we, we move on to something other property, it's really hard to sell. When it comes to the stamp, to buy the stamp here, we really have a hard time, that's why lawyers or anybody you go, they say, oh, you work, you live in village in Glendale Heights, it's gonna be tough to close the property.
The real estate transfer process has been streamlined, right, recently.
Right, right.
It has been streamlined recently, right, to not make it as cumbersome.
I haven't recently closed, but that's what I've been hearing from every, every one of the residents.
In the last six months, right, the real estate transfer process has been streamlined tremendously.
Oh, that's good to hear, yeah, I wish, yeah, yeah.
I, if we could talk afterwards, I can get, find out more about your permit, and I can get back to you.
Finally, I got the permit so far.
Oh, you got it, okay.
Yes, but it's after a month, and they should know that, I know, every, we, we are building the house, three house right by Pine Court here in, uh, Glendale Heights, it took six months to get the permit to start the house.
Well, you're building a subdivision, kind of, you're building three, you're building several houses.
Yeah, I mean, several houses, right, it took six months, I mean, how can we work, it, winter comes, so we cannot even start our project. So it should be faster process, either way, I mean, if you need more employee, you get to hire more employee, or, every time I email, that's, oh, you are in a pending, every time I email, you are pending, but never got return my emails. I call, oh, you are still on a pending. I mean, how could be the, how could bad over there, if you have more permit, just do the pastor process, I mean, don't just mention in little thing, but you gotta have done this work pastor. Because residents really get, you know, afraid to come up, but I'm really now wanted to come up and see, because election also is coming up too. So I want to men- mention that communities are there, and they're gonna be.
Okay.
Going up.
Your time is up, sir.
Thank you.
Way past. Okay, um, before we adjourn, I just wanted to personally thank. Okay, um, before we adjourn, I just wanted to personally thank the people that, uh, did the Safety Town at Halloween in that wind and cold. Uh, the volunteers, the, the people that stood there and handed out candy and froze their hinds off. Uh, we owed a, a debt of gratitude to them, and thank you very much from the board and the village, so... Is there a motion to adjourn? Chester?
Motion to adjourn.
Second?
Second.
Mike, okay, a whole in favor?
All right, Mike.
Yes, okay. Adjourn.